I'd like to welcome you to the not regularly scheduled meeting, but special call meeting in the Lufkin City Council. Welcome everyone here today. Appreciate you being with us. I'm going to ask Mike Parker to lead us in our invitation.
We give thanks heavenly Father to this country in which we live and the freedoms that we have, and we pray that we always have those. This time heavenly Father, we give thanks for this community in which we live. At this time, this meeting, these have set the rules and guidance for this community that we live in. We pray that you give them wisdom and knowledge and strength to make those decisions that will continue to uphold this community as a strong asset in this part of Texas. We ask heavenly Father that you be with all those that strive to protect our country locally, the state, country, and worldwide, that you be with them and their families, watch over them. Help us all to do what we can to help others, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We're now going to move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Items listed on the agenda are now open for public comment. If you would like to comment on a specific agenda item or items, please come to the microphone and state the specific agenda item or items you wish to address, and limit your comments to three minutes total. City council members will not respond during the public comments, but will take your comments into consideration during their deliberations. So if you'd like to make a public comment, you may step forward this time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would like to wait till time for item number four to give my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carl Kill, and do I just need to my complain or whatever you may want to call it now at this time?
Need to state an item.
What item are you here to speak about today?
I didn't have an item. Item four? Yeah. Okay, item four.
Okay.
Okay. First is basically considering or has to do with the upkeep of so-called Lufkin Northside with the ditches and the trees. We've been labeled on the north side as sort of like a separation from the east, north, and west, whatever, as far as the upkeep on the ditches and the tree overhangs. If you go to all these other locations, the tree overhang and the city upkeep itself, you'll see you can see the difference. You have city inspectors that ride daily looking for these violations because I see them with the houses and junk cars or whatever, but they can't see the ditches and the trees and stuff that are in these areas. I came before you in a town hall meeting before, and they told me it wasn't in the First of all, I wouldn't think it would be in the budget if the city had stayed on top of this or stayed on top of it as far as the upkeep and cleaning of it. We want to feel as though we're just as important to the city as the other parts of the city. So I'm asking, when can it be put in the budget that you've created by neglect as far as the upkeep? Inspectors drive and ride by, I see them, they drive and ride by and looking at all this, they see it because I see it. I live in the area and are all around. So I'm asking, when can you put it in the budget to do the upkeep? Because these ditches are weeded, sometimes you can't even see the culverts there because of the upkeep of needing digging out and stuff, whatever. So I just want to know if the city can address this budget-wise and stuff, whatever, so that we can feel like that we are just as important in this part of the city as the other. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Gail Little, and I live in the north Lufkin neighborhood. I've been here probably about maybe 13 years now, and for too long-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, what item are you speaking about today?
I'm sorry, item number four.
Item number four, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No problem, continue.
But for too long, our community has been overlooked. We have roads that are crumbling and the clutter is piled up. And like the man just stated was about the code enforcement. I've called the code enforcement more than three times, and I have seen where they do drive by. Now, in my neighborhood, all they have done is covered up those cars with tarps. That's not, it's not, it's eyesore. It's eyesore, and it continues to happen. I've been told that what they do, they send out letters to these people that have these junk cars and trash around their homes, but letters people do not read. I think there should be another enforcement to take place in order to get it cleaned If this budget does not prioritize the neighborhoods like mine, then we'll be left behind. And it's been years that we need clean streets, sidewalks. We also have a bus that comes downstairs, we need a bus stop there, because it's very dangerous once you come down Weaver Street and then turn right upstairs. It's a bus that comes down that way. That needs to be taken care of. And I just urge the council to direct funding to the road repairs, sidewalks, the safe bus stops, and neighborhood cleanup. Now, this has been going on for a couple of years, and I have not seen any changes. And I pay my taxes, and I'm quite sure other people here pay their taxes. And we today are just wanting a return on the taxes that we pay. I think that sending out letters to make people move their junk cars is just not enough. They need a warm body to approach them and say, look, we're going to give you a ticket, some type of restraint against them for not cleaning it up. It needs to be cleaned up. This morning, they came out, and they cut my pear tree. They said the limbs were obstructing the stop sign, which people don't stop at that stop sign, period. Okay, Brent, I think it was Brent Watkins years ago, he came out to my home, and he put a sign out that says no parking left or right, but they park there all the time. So I think the cops need to come and give them a ticket and make an example to let them know not to park there.
And we're going to wrap it up, you're out of time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, there being no one, we're going to close the public comment and move to the business agenda. Item number one is consider approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting on August 19th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number two, conduct a public hearing and consider approval on second reading of an ordinance granting a zoning change request to commercial and the future land use classification to corridor commercial for property addressed as 308 Civil Drive, Lufkin, Texas. Kevin?
This change request came in for a .915 acre tract, changing it from residential large to commercial on Civil Drive. You can see on the graphic, the blue represents adjacent commercial zoning, the white is adjacent residential large, of which this tract is. The change stated intent is to allow for future commercial development, and the surrounding area includes a mix of commercial and residential large zoning and uses. Staff finds the proposed zone change to be consistent with the current uses and zoning, as well as the corridor commercial future land use. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval on July 28th, and city council has approved the first reading on August 19th. Staff recommends council conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the ordinance.
Thank you, Kevin. This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item, you may step forward at this time. There being no one, we'll close the public hearing and move to comments from the council.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number three, conduct a public hearing and consider approval on second reading of an ordinance granting a zoning change request to apartment and the future land use classification to high-density residential for a portion of 2911 Old Union Road. Kevin?
This request is the second reading as well. On Old Union Road, it's to change the zoning for 5.22 acres of a 27 acre tract that would change from residential large to apartment. This would make a total of eight acres designated as apartment zoning in that area, and amend the land use plan from agricultural rural to high-density residential. The eight acres would be subdivided out with the different zoning. You can see on the zoning map that the existing apartment is on the frontage of Old Union. The crosshatch area is the eight acre total that is being requested to be apartment zoning. Staff received four letters opposing this request and one letter in support from residents within the 200-foot statutory area, the required notification area. Our review finds the proposed change consistent with the area zoning and uses and the future land use classification. Planning and zoning unanimously recommended approval on July 28th, and city council approved the ordinance on first reading on August 19th. Staff recommends council conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the ordinance.
This, too, is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item, you may step forward at this time. There being no one, we're going to close the public hearing and move to comments from the council.
Move approval.
Backhand real quick, Kevin or Scott, do you know what percentage of the adjacent landowners opposed? Is it the, we're not close to 20%?
We are not. Scott, do you remember what it went down to?
It's got revenue seed plan of like around 13 and a half percent.
His calculation was around 13 and a half.
All right, so we have a motion, looking for a second.
A second.
With a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number four, presentation of the City of Lufkin 2025-2026 proposed budget. Conduct a public hearing concerning the proposed budget and consider approval on first reading of an appropriations ordinance adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026. Kevin?
So you can do a public hearing after.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So we're presented a proposed budget to council for 2526 fiscal year. This proposed budget includes a tax rate of 52.8215 cents per $100 valuation. This is based on analysis from Angelina County Tax Assessor Collector. Now, this rate, if adopted, would have an effect on the average homestead owner of $77 annually compared to the current tax rate. This proposed tax rate, proposed budget reflects a decrease in our operational expenditures of 1.6% compared to last year's budget. I have in front of you on the dies a number of documents trying to summarize the budget, the improvements, the changes, and aspects of the budget that I wanted to highlight. Some of these include an increase in pay and benefits for employees, we've got new positions in multiple departments, we've got equipment replacements, we've got some elements of citizen engagement that are improved and added to, we've got infrastructure maintenance as well. If you open to the first page, it's your typical fund summary, looking at all of our operating funds from the general fund on through revenue funds and our acquisition The general funds, the first line, you can see that the proposed budget shows a net revenue of $353,000. If you go down, you see the hotel motel fund, it has a negative net revenue of 275. Now, hotel motel is used to fund our marketing tourism, our convention services, and it also funds projects related to that, which includes the gateway signage that's included in this budget. So the incoming gateway signage is why that's negative. You see other funds and their resulting balances, you know, the general fund is made up of tax from property, tax from sales, fees, and interest income, and these others are distributed from whether it be hotel motel tax or from their own revenue sources. You see the expenditures on our debt service, our water, wastewater, solid waste, and equipment. We are purchasing equipment, we're doing projects for our infrastructure through those funds, and the end results are on the right with the ending cash balance, and that projected reserve shows the required reserve amount per ordinance. So while this proposed budget does result in a net positive, I want to try to remind you of what we discussed as far as projects and the effects of paying on our own or paying through bonds. As I mentioned, current tax, at the current interest rate, if we were to borrow 5 million of bonds, we'd pay $700,000 in interest over 20 years. So we end up, you know, paying twice the amount. What we've been able to do in the last few years, in '23, we did $6.8 million worth of projects, in '24, we did 4 million, and in '25, we did 3 and a half. And those were Danny McCall, Gaslight, the Morse Frank Parks Improvements, things like that have been done from funds on hand. Projects that I see upcoming include what we just approved, the Parks and Trails Master Plan. You know, when that was presented, the outlay necessary or identified that was estimated at 4 and a half million total. Now, we've taken that, and we're in the process of working that into projects with refined budgets to bring to council for allocation in the future, but just knowing that that will be coming. In addition to that, we have completed a facility study showing needs such as roofing and AC units and paving repairs, and timed that out over the next 10 years, looking at around a million dollars needed in the next two years on our own facilities. So knowing that that type of expenses are coming up, in addition to our calls for streets, our drainage improvements, this budget includes some more culverts, includes those needed repairs at those failing locations. In addition to that, if you paid attention to the state legislature, they are opposed to local governance controlling property tax rate. They are trying to set it at a point that is actually below inflation rate, is what they attempted this year, it did not pass, but each year, they propose legislation that takes control from the local government and tries to run that in the state level. So I wonder what will be passed in the future and inhibit the council's ability to pass a tax rate when we need those other projects and things that need to be done. In light of all that, I am including the 52 cent tax rate, which is a 2 cent increase to provide for the needs of the city. And there's other aspects that we've talked about, like our debt service rate and contribution increasing next year, things like that. But we recommend council conduct a public hearing and begin this discussion on our proposed budget. And there's a lot of information in front of you, and I would like to go through and, you know, we looked at the fund summary, but the second page, so just so y'all understand what's included, the second page, those are sales tax history, it's a seven-year look at sales tax, you know, during the inflationary times of '21, '22, sales tax really, really jumped up. But if you look at the change in '23 to '24 last year, it's pretty flat. We had a negative 1.7 in '23, '24, and we, this year, are around 0.65 positive. The current budget includes the same amount of revenue that we had in the current year with in next year. So I've basically increased our previous budgeted sales tax estimates to match what we did in the previous year. So if we do the same as we did this year, next year, we will meet what's in the budget. There's a table of significant changes, and we broke it into, you know, operations and then personnel, but just some things to highlight to try to address what we discussed in our budget retreat, in looking at being more responsive to the public, elevating our level of service to meet expectations, to be able to address concerns with upkeep, with maintenance. Just highlighting some, we included an open records request software upgrade that will improve our timeliness and ability to convey records to the public, new service management software that will not only enhance internally our ability to digitally record information, but the access for the public is improved as well. For street department, included some additional contract work for tree cleanup when our dead trees get cut down, added a mowing contract for right-of-way to try to improve in keeping up with that. There's a document management software, we've got things like AC units at the convention center that are of regular cost. We've got 15 additional fire hydrant replacements that we've added because we've identified failing or units that we anticipate to fail and get those replaced. Also included in the budget is rate study for water and sewer, and our solid waste recycling has been time, it's time now to update those rate studies based on our actual operational cost and look at what we're charging and what we need to be charging to be solvent. And then if you continue, it shows the personnel changes, including the cost of living and the physicians that we've added. You know, one of the things that I think we've all noticed is the perception of not being able to get people when you come to city hall, and so I've included personnel to add to the atrium so that when people come to city hall, they have an individual, a real-life person to talk to. Where do I go for this? What do I need to do for that? And that'll help us with our citizen engagement. Also with our aging facilities, we looked at building and maintenance tech. We are aware of code enforcement, not being able to keep up with what we need in enforcing our existing ordinances, and we've been working on other things internally to help that workflow, to help, including education and certification on them. But also, in this budget includes an office assistant for that department so that our guys can be in the field more, and the office assistant will do more of the correspondence and following the statutes as far as contacting property owners and following up on those, and we can have more field presence with our code enforcement officers. Laborers for mowing, we've got a new trail crew included here, we've got plans for a cleanup project along the Isaiah Trail that will be happening in the coming months, and we're prepared for that going forward to get the Isaiah Trail up to a higher standard and maintain it, and that's included in the budget. In addition, things for our revenue funds like water and wastewater, you see there a PLC tech position, that's similar to a master electrician position needed to maintain our systems, and then for solid waste and recycling, we knew this was coming, and now is the time to implement an additional residential route, and that would require an additional residential driver position. So those are included. If you turn the next page, I've provided a comparison of expenditures from '23, '24, '25, and this current year, just to show you that outside of personnel, you know, with the inflation that we've seen over the last five years is equated about 23.6%, which is a big number. In order to keep talent, recruit talent, we have been trying to keep our pay scales increasing to in line roughly with inflation. So this comparison excludes salaries and benefits, so what are we doing outside of our personnel? And you see here that our proposed budget is down 16% compared to last year for the general fund. And you see the different departments, how they're broken down, and they vary by number, but overall 16%. Hotel motel, you see it being up 22%. Well, we funded gateway signage, so the expenditures are going to go up there. Convention service is down 7%, special rec up, you know. This just gives you an analysis showing outside of personnel what our supply costs, what our operational costs are, and how they compare to previous years. And then lastly, there's a general fund, construction fund sheet showing what is planned for our general fund projects. You see pavement repairs at city hall, you've got AC units for our computer server room, we've got materials for drainage improvements, painting and stuff at the library, and fire admin. This just summarizes what projects are funded in the current budget. And, you know, coming back to the way we have to do things, may seem odd, and it is odd, that our budget discussion is prior to the tax rate because the tax rate affects the budget, but that's the way the statute lays it out. So we are considering the budget, it includes that 52 cent tax rate. The other piece of paper and document that I provided you gives a breakdown of tax rate in discussion, and we'll use it on this and the next items when we talk about the tax levy and the discussion. The tax rate history is the first sheet showing, you know, the last 20, 30 years of tax rate. We're a little below average there. The tax levy estimate, second page, shows the impact of different tax rates on the average homestead. So the county tells us the average appraised value of a homestead is 178,000, and you see that if we don't increase the tax rate, their taxes will be increasing by $41. That second row there at 174,89, and if we do 1 cent increase, it goes up $59. If we do 2 cent increase, it goes up $77 for the year for the average homestead. Your experience will vary because that is just one look at it or one way to look at In addition, the next page is, again, looking at the average homestead and comparing what we've done over the previous years from '21 through '26, and just highlighting the percent change in tax rate is the third column. The proposed budget includes a 3.9% change in tax rate, and the impacts on the total levy on the average homestead value. And then behind that is calculations from the appraisal district of appropriating levy to the city based on the valuations from the county. For the appraisal role comparison, you know, just the addition of new properties and the increase in valuations, the proposed budget shows a net $715,000 increase in revenue. The 1 cent tax increase on the next page would result in 452,000 total revenue. Please note that the M and O goes down, and I'll talk about that. And then the zero change in tax rate is 190,000 total, but the negative numbers at the bottom of this sheet, if y'all are following me, the negative red numbers are our appropriation to maintenance and operations going down because we're appropriating more to debt service this year, a higher percentage. Our debt service rate was 3 and 1/2 cents last year, it's going to 5.215. So the percentage of tax levy going to debt service is increasing, and therefore, less of it is going to M and O. And that's a lot of information, and it is, trying to break it down into different aspects and different impacts of the budget, what we're trying to do- What we're trying to do to meet what we as a, y'all as a body and me part of that body had identified as areas of service that we could improve and ways that we can improve in the city, and this is one way to do it. So open for discussion and having a public hearing.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
So this is a public hearing. See, we've got somebody here wants to speak on our budget.
I have a question.
Familiar face.
Speak on the budget, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, let us know your name real quick.
My name is Josephina Bonner, but I have a procedural question.
Okay.
I rose to speak on item number four, but the city manager spoke on items number four, five, and six. Do I get nine minutes?
Well, so we're gonna go through and read each of these, and if you want to step back up, I assume you could on each item.
Well, he's already talked about them.
Well, we're gonna, but we're gonna go through them, so you'll have an opportunity if you wanna, if you wanna get back up and speak on each one.
Well, I, I really wanted to speak on four, but if you give me nine, I appreciate it. May I go forward?
Sure.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Josephina Bonner, and I am here as a resident of the neighborhood where the streets of Cullahuas and Kane intersect just west of the railroad tracks owned by the Union Pacific Railroad. I am here to request funding that will strengthen our neighborhood, neighborhoods appearance, health, and pride. In the opening pages of the draft annual operating budget for fiscal year October 1, '25 through September 30, '26, it states, guided by city council leadership, we will be an organization that offers an excellent quality of life for the citizens. Our mission is to meet the needs of the citizens. You have received a booklet, it has some information in it, and I will go past the, the table of contents, because I know you can read that. Our issues are junk and debris on properties have become serious eyesore in our neighborhoods. Abandoned vehicles, scrap and clutter not only hurt property values, but also attract pests and health hazards. Discourage, it also discourages new businesses and families from moving into our community, and it undermines community pride and safety. Our current challenges, ordinances are outdated and do not fully address today's cleanup needs. Enforcement is limited because the city lacks staff and resources. Many residents want to comply, but there are no clear guidelines or consistent enforcement. Proposed solutions, I am here to request budget funding in two areas. Enforcement resources, hire or designate staff to respond to violations, provide notices, and work with residents. Support neighborhood cleanup days with equipment, dumpsters, and disposal service. Staff to draft and update ordinances. Fund a part-time or contract position to research and draft ordinances with no grandfather clause. Ensure new rules that are clear, fair, and enforceable while giving residents time and resources to comply. Benefits to the community, health and safety, cleaner yards, reduce pests, fire hazards, and illegal dumping. Economic growth, attractive neighborhoods, increase property values, and make our city more appealing to new businesses. Civic pride, oh, I'm almost done. You can read the rest of this. But at the bottom it says, you might ask why I did not raise these issues while I served on the city council. The answer to that question is, I did. For the past three years, I sought a remedy. I first went to the code enforcement office.
Ms. Bonner, you're gonna have to wrap it up. Can we read the rest of that, or you wanna just wrap it up real quick?
I've got to emphasize one part. Now I come to you as a city council, city's governing body, seeking fairness, equity, and support for the aforementioned part of the city. I am not asking for one-time fix, I am asking for a sustainable investment in our city's future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak on item number four? All right, there being no one, we're gonna close the public comment and move to comments from the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Everyone, I would first just like to address the report that Kevin presented to us. Being 123 days on the council, I found it to be very detailed and very transparent, giving us a history of where we were, where we are, and hopefully where we will be able to become, where we'll be able to be in the future. So first I want to say thank you for that detailed report. Secondly, one of the things that I've been stressing in my 123 days to the community is that in order to have your voice heard in the room, you need to come to the room. So thank you so very much for those of you who had comments today, Mr. Keel, Ms. Gail, and Ms. Bonner, in regards to items on the budget. I wanted to highlight a general statement that each of you made was in reference to code enforcement and issues concerning on the north side. And one of the issues was a lack of staff. If you recall, in the budget, as Kevin mentioned, he is requesting to implement new staff members, so that will aid in that concern that you have addressed. Secondly, in regards to the presentation that some of our neighbors choose to have regarding keeping items in their yards and creating a negative view, once again, that was something else that he addressed, that with more staff on board than our code enforcement office was to be able to, as the song says, have more boots on the ground, they'll be able to be more on the ground going door to door, addressing these issues that you presented. I haven't had a chance to review your entire packet, but once again, thank you for this information as well, but I just wanted to highlight that some of the concerns that were mentioned by Mr. Keel, Ms. Gail, and Ms. Bonner were also noted in the report that was given by Kevin. So thank you so very much on behalf of Ward One. And I would, the last thing I would say, some of the comments that you've made, Ms. Bonner, in regards to, I want to say you referenced two streets, I can see this report being a reflection of many streets in many areas in Lufkin.
I know one, so I can only speak Kane Street.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, any other discussion on this item?
I think, looking at it, I mean, it's pretty easy to say yes, and then not to always think about the, the effects on, you know, everybody, myself included. And I would like to echo the comment about the code enforcement, that has been an issue that, that has been, been brought up, and I think Kevin was telling me recently, there was a big overhaul of some of the processes and things to allow for more time. There's been some issues that, that we've brought up, and a really effective way to, to fix them is just for, for our team to communicate, there's a problem, and most of the cases get fixed, or, or in the process can be fixed. But back to the, the budget rate, I think, my, my personal opinion is, I think there, there's some things that I think we could trim out, but I'd be in favor of keeping the, the same rate that we have now. But there are, there are some concerns with future changes and things of that nature. I think there's some other avenues that we could explore to, to fund those as they come up.
Well, and I'd like to say that the response to that is not, on the surface, I would agree, you know, not, not taking more tax, right? But at the same time, I sit here and I'm, you know, listening to the concerns of Ward One, the other wards all have, take away our numbers, our city has concerns, we have some issues, and I don't mean that they are great issues in anyone's eyes, but Lufkin eyes, but they are our issues. The idea of not raising, of, of, of taking more, of raising taxes, of, what am I trying to say, collecting, in a time like right now, where it's hard, our groceries are expensive, our gas is expensive, our living is, everything is so expensive, but I'm afraid if we don't make a small change, then we will stay stagnant. And I think that we are able to add to some of our city services, and we are able to address some of your concerns, and, and yes, for, you know, I was only with you a very short time on council, but you were very adamant and a wonderful voice for, for your ward. I agree that, do I really want, do I personally, my husband, do we want to pay a few cents more? No, absolutely not. No, I would, I, I don't. But do I believe it necessary evil to accomplish our goals for our city? Unfortunately, yes, we, we have to look at where we're heading, and I, while I do not personally want it, I do agree that upping our, taking in of the tax honestly is the best thing for our city. We have projects we want finished, we have staff we want to add, we cannot make a lot of these things happen where we are. That's, that's the problem we're in. We're hearing with what we have, we can't do what we need to with what we have. We need a bit more, and you have to turn to me, you, all of us and our citizens, and say, okay, we're going to do this, but we're gonna use it the right way. It's the same thing I said last year when we did this. We just have to make sure that we're accountable and transparent about how we're using it. I am in favor of the two cents.
Even keeping at the same rate, we'd still be looking at a 4.8% increase based on the increased property values. And I think, I think there's some non, there's some things that we could look at that are related to zone and code enforcement to allocate more resources toward improving that area of our, of the city, also reducing expenses.
I agree on that.
There's not.
Well, I, I think we have a, we outlined a fairly ambitious list of projects for the next few years, parks being one of them, and we've heard the need that our parks need help, and they do need help. And we've allocated money for that, extra money in the budget to clean up trails, clean up bathrooms, in the long run, provide security lighting and other items to make our parks more secure and safe. Buddy and I were having a conversation today, wherever he is, I've lost him, about cutting trees around some of the playgrounds at the parks that have been damaged by drought or lightning and other items, because we certainly don't want them falling on the playground. That all takes money, and it takes money for our employees, too, and up until last year, our employees were lagging significantly behind, and we've made some fairly significant changes to the budget to try to accommodate salaries and benefits for our employees, because we were having a turnover of people, and it wasn't good for the city as a whole. And Dr. Bonner is well aware of that, because she was part of those conversations. And like Ms. Ogden said, nobody wants to raise taxes, but I don't think in the long run, we have much of an option. We've got a fairly conservative budget, it's flat, we're expecting flat sales tax revenue to come in from this year to next year. So I think it's conservative. If we get more sales tax revenue, great, we can find some way to spend it to beautify the city or save it for a rainy day. And what we've done in the past few years is we pulled cirpluses out of various accounts to provide for capital expenditures and other items, so that we didn't have to issue bonds and take on more debt service. That money has now pretty much come to an end, so we're gonna have to find some way to service these projects. Taxes are one way, and issuing bonds is another. Now maybe we need to issue bonds to maintain our rate to some extent. I can't speak to that, I'm not a financial advisor. But I'm in favor of the 2%, of the two cent increase at this point.
So at this point, the 052 is already included in the budget. And so, in the past, we had a healthy reserve, and so, but as time has went on, we've been dipping in the reserve. And so at this point, you know, we really don't have much left in the reserve in case something really happens, and then we'd be getting in our general fund. And my main thing is, we have to take care of our employees. We lose a lot to other companies' business because we are not up to standard on the pay. And so we want to make sure that we could keep them maintained, and so they could have a good retirement from the city. And the citizens, they look at us to make sure, okay, spend our tax dollars right. And I promise you, we have those conversations, to make sure we spend your tax dollars right in the right places to make sure you benefit. And as you know, I get called from everybody, so I understand what you're talking about. And I call every time, and then things get done. So, but with that being said, we have things on the horizon and things that need to be improved. And so with that, we, we need to go up a little bit to make sure that we have enough to maintain what we need to do. So I'm in favor of the 052 in the budget.
Kevin, I have one additional quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
That sparked my thoughts as Brent was speaking. In regards to the street department proposal of three seasonal laborer employees versus with parks and recs, we have a proposal of one full-time and two part-time. Are we able to possibly, are you able to possibly look at that? Because once again, we continue to hear code enforcement and drainage and so forth. Is there any way at some point to possibly revisit that, with those specific roles, instead of it being seasonal, maybe the seasonal could become a part-time position? Only because, to me in Texas, we have heat and grass, heat and grass, heat and grass, heat and grass all year long. I mean, it may be a couple of weeks where things don't happen, but I haven't seen it yet, totally. So there seems to be some need for upkeep at all times. So I guess my overall question is, is there anywhere within this entire presentation to possibly include another position, or instead of them being seasonal positions, to make them perhaps part-time positions? So they would be consistent throughout the year and not just quote unquote seasonal, whatever seasonal looks like?
Yeah. Just to clarify the seasonal aspect, we were attempting to address mowing needs.
Okay.
So focusing on the, the months that mowing are, is of the highest priority, and that's why they were labeled as seasonal for that. Yes, it could be adjusted to more of a full-time employee, it would be a higher cost, obviously, for that. The, there's other aspects of addressing those needs, like focusing our workforce in certain areas. I mean, our guys are not sitting around, as y'all know, they're not sitting around not doing things. It's catching, what, you know, this, this disaster, this thing happens, and it moves up, and these move down. It's a matter of prioritizing and getting those, those things addressed. So by putting in seasonal mowers, it's helping them to get those weekly tasks done in the mowing quicker, and there's a compounding effect of, of benefit there that it's hard to measure.
Okay.
But, so the answer, quick answer is, yes, it could be looked at, but it would increase total cost.
Got it, got it. But those, this proposal will actually assist the current people that are currently in place right now.
It does provide assistance with the current people.
Thank you.
I hate raising taxes, I just feel like that we're taxed to death on a variety of different ways, but for us to provide the services to the city in the areas that we need to provide them, I feel like a, a two cent raise is justified. People have already said some of the things that I'm gonna say, that the, we have used money out of the general fund, or that we have now depleted that, so we don't have that excess that we have going forward. I'm concerned what the state's going to do as far as limiting our hands when there are funds that are gonna be needed in future years, but we don't have the means to get that, that money. And that, and that's an unknown, but it is out. And that's an unknown, but it is out there. And we can't quantify it right now, but it's there. Ms. Bonner, I mean, I've got issues in my neighborhood that I wish some trees were cut, some round creeks and stuff, and I'll call. And they just have, they have stuff to do all over the city. And so, I have not been to your neighborhood, I just know, okay. But I know I've got issues in mind that I have to call periodically. Hey, can you check on this tree? We were going, or clean up around the, and, but, okay. But I'm in favor of a, of a 2 cent increase.
So Belinda, tell me again how much revenue the city will bring in this year under the exact same rate as we had last year? I could swear at the last meeting, it was a lot more than what's in this packet today. Maybe I misunderstood. Did you not say something like $750,000?
That's the figure I remember.
That's the figure I remember, too.
For 750?
But now it's like $200,000.
So if you look at the exact same rate, if you look at the exact same rate
Yep.
that we have currently.
Which sheet?
It would be the very last sheet in the tax rate discussion packet. That is the exact same rate that we have today.
Right.
And that, for budget purposes, is only an increase of $190,000.
Okay, so where, at the last meeting, where was the 750 coming from?
The 750 was coming from the 52 cents, and we also talked about the 55 cents, which was the voter approval rate.
Yeah, we had three.
But this back here, this right here, that bottom sheet, that's without personnel? Or is that with personnel? This, the 190, 276?
That is total revenue.
That's total, okay, so that is included, okay.
So this says fiscal year 2025 ARB approved certified total. So this is, I realize this is the number we base the budget on, but is this ultimately what we received? Was it a different amount?
Actually, we received less.
We received less than this?
The updated appraisal roll that we received had decreased from what we actually budgeted last year.
And that's one thing to point out. We base these on preliminary numbers. Collection rates will vary, they haven't even settled valuations yet, they give us their best guess at this time.
Belinda, what was the percentage that it was below what we budgeted?
I don't know that number for sure.
Sorry to put you in a spot.
It would probably be about maybe 2%.
Fair enough.
All right, anyone else wanting to speak on this item?
So Mark, at this rate, let me do some quick math. $262,000 per cent of increase, what would be the difference?
For M&amp;O, it's actually 236, but, yeah, total 262. Some of that would go to debt service for maintenance and operations, it's 236, 3 over 1.
So, I will say, this meeting today, you guys have done a nice job bringing us all this information. I think you created a justifiable reason to increase the tax rate. I, for one, am not ever in favor of a tax, of a tax increase, but I just want it to be justified if it takes place. Because ultimately, the homeowners, I mean, everyone pays through ownership of a home or if you're renting a home, your landlord's just going to increase your rent to cover the property taxes on the house. So ultimately, everyone, everyone pays. But I will say, something else to make mention of, this was our tax rate in 20, was it 2017?
2014.
2014.
We're below what it was in 2014.
And what's really frustrating, and the state does, as Kevin said, do a lot of things that are very frustrating to local municipalities in requiring us, if we, if our revenue exceeds a certain amount, we then have to, we're forced to lower the rate or take that to the voters. And that's the reason in 2024, there was such a substantial rate decrease, because as you're all aware, if you own property in Angelina County, our appraisal values went through the roof. And understand that we all get frustrated about that, but if that's not done correctly and we don't, on a routine basis, keep those values in check, the state will come in and do that for you. And that's kind of like the IRS coming in and doing your tax return for you. So you don't want the state to come in and tell you what you need to appraise all of your properties at. So you have to do the best job you can to get them as close as you can. And it's all just, it's a necessary evil that we all pay. But I think it's important that we are very much mindful of how we spend those funds and where those funds go. And I think that the city does do a very good job in doing that. And we, you know, we have a lot of areas that we cover, as we all know, but I think you guys have done a very good job in your presentation today of these budget numbers. So anyone else before we begin the roll call? All right, so we're going to need, I always get confused on this, does somebody need to make a motion to approve the 5.2, if that's, or whatever, whatever they want to do?
The budget as presented.
Just the budget. So we just need, we need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
The budget as presented.
I second it.
Okay. And remind me again, is this a roll call vote on this item or this is for the next? Yeah, okay. So, because we started with Mr. Louder last time, or that, I think Mr. Loughlin's name, Mr. Louder, got to skip out because you were not here.
I think you did, you left me out on the end.
Coming your way soon. All right, we're going to start with Ms. Ogden.
Okay, so I would, like, yes, right? I mean, does it work? Roll call all the way down? Yeah, okay, yes, for, I am for it, yes.
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 No.
All right, fair enough. That motion, it's item number four, passes. All right, item number five, consider approval on first reading of an ordinance for the City of Lufkin, Texas ratifying the property tax revenue in the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget as a result of the city receiving more revenues from property taxes than the previous fiscal year. So here's the thing, not a public, this is not a public hearing, but item number six is, you can come get your three, you get six minutes.
I get six minutes, all right.
So this is ratifying the property tax revenue and specifically the increase that was approved in the budget. Truth in taxation requires proposal and adoption of a budget for ratification of the revenue increase from property taxes. At the proposed budget tax rate, our budget would raise more general revenue, general fund revenue than the previous budget by $715,388. Staff recommends council consider approval on first reading of an ordinance ratifying the property tax revenue for the 25-26 fiscal year. So that's depicted in the appraisal district summary and the tax discussion that we looked at. At the proposed tax rate, it gives you the valuations for '26, and the total levy for '26 at that proposed tax rate. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Kevin. All right. You guys want to talk about this for a minute, or do you want to move forward with a motion to approve?
Not much to talk about.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve it. Yeah, there is, yeah, specific wording that you'll need to read, Jimmy, if you're capable of doing that today.
Where's this specific wording? Oh, for five, oh, it's after, sorry.
No, there's not specific wording.
I'm sorry, we were wrong, it's for six, it's for the next one.
Oh.
We were just getting, yeah. Were you getting word, Jimmy? All right, Jimmy, go ahead. So you're going to make a motion?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. Again, we're going to do a roll call vote, start with Mr. Louder?
No.
Yes.
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 All right, that motion passes. Motion carries, what I would say, right? Motion carries. All right, item number six, conduct a public hearing and consider approval on first reading of an ordinance levying taxes for the use and support of municipal government on the City of Lufkin, and providing for the debt service fund for the fiscal year 2025-2026, and appropriating each levy for the specific purpose.
So just a little bit additional information, you know, as part of this process, they require some calculations on a, what's called a no new revenue tax rate. Texas Tax Code, Chapter 26.04. This is intended to enable the public to evaluate the relationship between the taxes for the prior year and the current year, based on a tax rate that would produce the same amount of tax revenue if applied to the same properties taxed in both years. There are some flaws in their formulas, but that's what they say it does. The no new revenue tax rate was determined to be .47730, so approximately 3 cents less than our current tax rate. The current tax rate of .508215. Now, our proposed tax rate of .528215 is higher than the current tax rate and will raise more total property tax revenue than last year, as stated, $715,388, which is a 4.92% increase. Of that, $167,512 is from new property added to the tax roll. The vote on the ordinance setting a tax rate must be a record vote, and a motion to adopt the ordinance setting a tax rate that exceeds the no new revenue tax rate must be made in the following form, you can see it there. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .528215, which is effectively a 3.94% increase in the tax rate. Staff recommends council conduct a public hearing and approve first reading of an ordinance with the specified motion setting the tax levy for the 25-26 fiscal year, and it is a public hearing.
Very good. We're going to now open up the public hearing.
Were you kidding about my six minutes?
Give it, you got three now, you got your other half or six.
You just got three of them. The reason I'm back on this item is because I would like the council to consider. I understand my friend to the west of Ward 1, I understand your reasons for that, but we need to have some funds dedicated to a major emphasis that it needs to be earmarked. I don't know how you do that, but we need to have some funds that can be specifically focused on a process to clean up what we've asked from our area. I know you do an analysis of the streets and you give them a grade as to what streets need to be fixed. Well, we want that to be done to areas where there's blight, where there is junk, where there is things thrown all over the place, and I'm asking for the councils to consider. And I don't know if it's legal, but if it's not legal, fix it so it can be legal. In America today, legality doesn't seem to be a problem. But we, as you consider, and you're going to eventually have to go to the citizens for some type of funding, that you consider earmarking some funds for the cleanup and the improvement of all the area that is across the railroad track. That's what grandma used to call it. And so I ask the councils to make that consideration.
Thank you.
I've listened to your budget, and it's, it's a good budget, but I haven't heard anything allocated for North Lufkin. Earmark, as she said. Something needs to specifically go toward, at least, when you talked about the parks. What about Jones Lake? That lake is drying out and it's snake-ridden, and those snakes are going into our communities, in our neighborhoods, and right down the street is a school. What are we going to do about that? Those are big snakes. If you're like me, I see them, I hate snakes, but I can't do nothing but avoid them. But our children, they play, they play in that park. If they have the snakes coming out of the lake, where are they going to go? They'll go to those woods where those trees, those limbs that fall, that when you pick them up in the park, you put them at the base of the tree, those snakes move into those places, and those kids play around that. They'll get bit. Then what we got? Another problem. But that's just a small thing. Parks, allocate money for that. But then our roads, our streets, you can't drive up Bank Street without rattling your car. You're going to get knocked, it will put your car on fleck. I know I've had to get front-end alignments on my vehicle, man, about three times already this year, just riding around all the time. Let's fix that. These potholes are ridiculous. I understand Frank Street, but what about the rest of it? The neighborhoods? Our neighborhoods, they flood? Our ditches? Well, the ditches is taking over the road. When we actually, if it's raining and we get ready to pass one another on the road, somebody's, we better stop. Let them pass and then we can go on. And it shouldn't be that way, because you don't do that nowhere else in Lufkin. Nowhere else in Lufkin. But it's in North Lufkin, yeah, you better stop. You better stop or you're going to wind up in a ditch, because the ground, the road, it's going to give way if you get too close to the ditch. It's already eroding. We need to do more. Let's focus and allocate funds for North Lufkin. I understand this is, when I come out of my house, when I look on, when I stand on my porch, when I come in my driveway, I want to look at Lufkin. I want to see the same things in my neighborhood as I, when I come across town, I want to see it, just like that. Let's light it up. Put the lights on. Let's turn the lights on. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, I'm Stephanie Olford, sitting back there, my husband just listening to so much that go on. It is a thin line between a lot of things, but my question is, is that my upbringing of my mother's, a single mother with eight kids, we lived in a rough area, I'm from New Jersey. Born in Brooklyn, New York, and in New Jersey, there are some rough areas, there are some smooth areas, and there are some bumpy areas. But you never know what area that it is that needs to be fixed if you don't go see it. I think being hands-on, face value, taking a trip through the neighborhood to see what the picture looked like, that you can match it with the words. I really believe that in Lufkin, we've been here 13 years. My husband and I do a lot of riding around, seeing the different neighborhoods and things, and there are some quite nice neighborhoods. But in the area where we are, there are some broken neighborhoods. There's a lot of things that need to be fixed. And if we're going to work as a community, as I said in the other meeting, we got to get out there, as Ms. Spencer said, you do have to put your boots on the ground. You do have to go out there and see the need of it, that when you sit back, you'll have a picture of a vision in front of you, what's the real need is. And I believe that Lufkin is a nice place. We've been talking about encouraging our family to get here, but we put a pause on it. It's because we've been here 13 years, we see the need, we're hands-on with the need. As I heard the gentleman said, we go down roads that if you're not careful, you'll spend more money getting your car fixed in the road, getting it fixed at the years that's needed. So there is a need there. And I know all of us that sit up here and are sitting out here may have some places that's nice, thank God for that, but other people is less fortunate. And if we're going to make Lufkin what we see it to be, we're going to have to get out there, put our hands in it, our minds in it, strategize a little bit more, budget a little bit more, and find out when we can get the finances is to make Lufkin, even Angelina County, matter of fact, even better. But as I said before, if you've never been in the neighborhood, you can't speak of it. You got to go there to know it. And to know it, then you'll know what to do with it. So I just want to share with us here, it's a need. It's really a need. Some of y'all are fortunate to have what you have. But when we came here from New Jersey to see a lot of things, a lot of people is less fortunate. And they try, try to make. And they try, try to make things look better, try to make things meet the ends of it, but they're struggling. And if anybody know a struggle, you're talking to someone that been there, done it, and got the T-shirt to wear it. But thank God, my mom taught me how to survive in the struggle and to make things better, but everybody don't have that mindset. So what are we going to do for our community? How are we going to come together? How are we going to be able to do the things that we have heard the people out here? Because you want the community to come to tell you what the need is. But if we ignore the need, that means that you're not entering in the need. So let's, let's make it a little better, and I wrapped it up. But my thing is, come to the neighborhoods and see, and you'll have a better understanding.
Thank you.
You won't have to hit the red button with me. I'm going to be short. My name's Bruce Love, and I didn't anticipate speaking on this item, but I will tell you from what I've heard, I can give you a little bit of feedback to give the code enforcement folks a little bit more teeth. So that, and I'll tell you, we have numerous rental properties, and commercial and residential, and I have received letters from the City of Lufkin. Hey, this needs to be fixed. I grew up on Forest Park Street, and I can tell you, my mom had a car in the front yard for about five years that never moved. So I don't know if she got any letters, that was when I was a kid, but I've gotten letters plenty from the City of Lufkin that, hey, you need to go fix this, fix that, and we have done that. We try to be a good neighbor. But I can, I can tell you that putting more teeth into code enforcement for the things that don't get taken care of is needed. I had a burned, burned-out house across from one of our rental properties, and it took about five years because they kept coming back saying, well, we're going to fix it, we're going to fix it. And I think eventually it did get fixed, but that's a blight that's gone on far, far too long. And so when I've reported things to code enforcement, it seems like there's some, there's more teeth needed. And, and I'm not criticizing anybody at City of Lufkin on code enforcement. I can tell you that it seems like that's needed, and I'm hearing that from other folks as well. And that's coming from somebody that's gotten a lot of letters over the years that, hey, you need to go fix this. But we do fix it. So it's need, I think it's needed, and I didn't anticipate speaking on it, but I just wanted to give you that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now going to close the public hearing and move to comments from the council. You're going to need the motion, and you got to read what's written when you make your motion.
Before we make a motion, can I make one comment? Ms. Olford, I like what you said, that it's important for us to come into the, go into the community to see exactly what the people are speaking of. I want to appreciate Scott Rayburn with the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you ever have an opportunity to serve on planning and zoning, if there is an opening, I would encourage you to do so because it will open your eyes. Each week when we received our packets, as I shared with Kevin, I would make sure that I would go into the neighborhood to see exactly what we were going to be discussing and voting on, on that upcoming Monday. How can you speak of something if you don't know what you're talking about? So you have to be present and seen. So your statement was definitely correct, and I know that's something that's practiced with planning and zoning. And I believe that's something that is also practiced individually of your council members represented. Kim just made the statement, oh, let's remove the numbers and say we are Lufkin. You are right, we are one Lufkin, but the community still sees us individually, and we need to make sure they see us collectively. Robert, just this past weekend, and there was no need for me to call you because it, it was a simple fix. We received a call from a relative from out of, from out of the city referencing someone was walking in their neighborhood, evidently code enforcement regarding their grass. Yes, Angela, my grass does need to be cut. I'm like, so why haven't you taken the responsibility to cut it? So what did I do? I gave her a referral to a local landscaper to handle the situation. We must be accountable and we must be responsible for our own as well. Yes, the city owes a lot to the community of things that we need to do, but we have to take ownership as well. So my final comment in regards to the comments that have been rendered. I like what you said, Mr. Teal, about turn the light on. Community, if we see something, turn the light on. Take a picture of it, send it to one of us. If we're not, we can't physically get there, at least we can see what's going on and then make a concern or make a, make a call to Kevin and/or to Brian in regards to your concern. But we don't know unless you let us know. But more so, as we continue to make ourselves present in the community, we will know. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Meo.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I thought Jimmy was going to do it.
I thought Jimmy was too, so I'm looking at him.
Everybody's waiting around.
You need a motion?
Yes.
We have to read it?
Are you going to read it?
I will read it. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.528215, which is effectively a 3.94% increase in the tax rate.
All right, so we will start with Ms. Ogden.
Yes.
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a second.
I will second it.
All right. Perfect. So we'll start the roll call with Ms. Ogden.
Yes.
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 All righty, that motion carries. Is there any further business to be discussed today?
I would just like to publicly thank Belinda and Finance Department, y'all who presented to you. It's not, I don't put it together by myself. It takes quite a bit of effort, you know, beginning with around April when we start looking at numbers and the budget retreat that we typically have in June to discuss things in detail. So thank you to Belinda and her staff.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, the time is 1:17, we're now adjourned.